This meeting has come to order. Today is Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any introductions?
You know, yeah, I think I will. I think I'll do it because I can. All right? I think we ought to acknowledge Henry for being here today and tell him what a wonderful job all the street work around town's doing, Henry. Thank you.
Okay, we have the invocation right now by Father Ralph from Sacred Heart Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Blair.
Will you like to bow your heads for the prayer? God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all blessings and of all that is good. Thank you for your every gift and for the opportunity to gather together this day. We ask for your blessing on our city council meeting. Guide and direct us so that we may be filled with wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another, and bring about the greatest good for the people of Prescott. Help us to reach our goals so that in doing our work, we may always fulfill your holy will. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman LaZell.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Menchisca is absent, excused. Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
City Manager, do we have any announcements?
No announcements, Mayor.
Do we have a number of proclamations?
Proclamation A, proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, 2016 as Constitution Week. And I believe Councilman Lamerson will, Mayor Pro Tem Lamerson will read that. And Sharon Johnson is here to accept.
I'm glad you're here. Come on up.
I will.
Whereas September 17th, 2016, marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law Number 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, Harry Oberg, Mayor of the City of Prescott, hereby proclaims the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and asks the citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution and what they had in 1787 in vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Harry, sign the document.
And I thank you all. Thank you for the proclamation. And just one little quick reminder, it's the responsibility of every one of us in this room and every one of us in this country to maintain the intent of the document, not just the physical document. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And you have a nice day.
Thank you.
Item B, proclaiming September 24th, 2016 as First Responders Appreciation Day. And Kevin and Janice Edwards?
Yes.
I want to, I would have thought today we would have filled the whole room with police and firemen with this.
We should have.
First Responders Appreciation Day, September 24th, 2016. Whereas throughout history, the City of Prescott has been blessed with some of the most dedicated, well-trained, highly skilled law enforcement and firefighter-fighting personnel to be found anywhere, both paid and volunteer. And whereas these brave men and women risk their lives daily and perform as their duties protecting the lives and property of Prescott and the best defense against any and all emergencies that may threaten our persons, our community, and whatever it may be. And whereas our first responders are ready 24/7 and a week, wait a minute, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and in times of crisis, they stand tall as beacons of order and safety. And whereas our first responders not only give to themselves professionally, they are often seen volunteering their time in our community, in our schools, serving as role models to the youth of Prescott. And whereas the City of Prescott would like to recognize these first responders for their hard work and dedication, which often performs without thanks. Now therefore, I, Harry B. Oberg, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do proclaim September 24th, 2016, as First Responders Appreciation Day. In addition, I also proclaim that the City of Prescott, each year, the Fourth Saturday of September will be designated as First Responders Appreciation Day. In witness thereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this 13th day of September, 2016.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You know, when we saw on television, police being shot in the streets and being lured to their deaths, and firefighters trying to do their job in riots subsequent of these actions, and their lives being put in danger by rioters, we said, wait a minute, this is not how it's supposed to be. And we want Prescott, Arizona, to be an example to the world of how the community and their first responders relate to one another, commune together. And I hope you'll come out. It's at Bill Valley Field on September 24th. We have both fields. Thank you, Joe. On the top field, there's going to be a child's dream entertainment for the kids and grandkids. They dress up like princesses and Disney characters, and Captain America's going to be there, of course. You can't have a First Responders Day without him. So come on out, enjoy the day, good food. There's a softball rematch between the police and the firefighters. The police are holding court right now. So I expect the team, all right, they'll take care of it. Okay. So please, come out September 24th and enjoy a day of communing with your first responders, and be sure to thank them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item C, proclaiming September 26th, 2016 as Prescott College Day. And Mr. John Flicker is here.
This is a proclamation for Prescott College Day. It was done a number of years ago, and the mayor graciously is going to do it again. We're going to proclaim that September 26th, 2016, is Prescott College Day. Whereas the City of Prescott and the residents thereof played a large and important part of the formation of Prescott College. And whereas the residents of the City of Prescott have continued to support the growth of that institution. And whereas certain officials and residents of the City of Prescott have served in the past and presently serving as members of the Board of Trustees of Prescott College. And whereas on September 26th, 2016, Prescott College will celebrate its 50th birthday as a private, independent accredited institution of higher learning. Now therefore, I, Harry Oberg, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do hereby proclaim September 26th as Prescott College Day in the City of Prescott.
Awesome.
May I introduce John Flicker? John is the president of Prescott College.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mayor Oberg. This is a big year for us, is our 50th anniversary, and so we really appreciate this proclamation. And as you said in the proclamation there, this is really a celebration for the whole city. It's not just Prescott College, because this place was really founded by the people in Prescott. You may not know this history, but it was originally Dr. Charles Franklin Parker, who was pastor of the First Congregation Church on Curly Street, who had a vision for a new kind of college here in Prescott, that was modeled after Harvard and Yale and some of the great institutions of the East. And he started raising money from people in the community. He got pledges for over $1 million back in the 1960s to start a new college, which attracted the Ford Foundation to then host the big conference here in Prescott to figure out what kind of alternative education should be offered at this time. And out of that, Prescott College was founded in 1966. We invited our first class in at that time. And we're still doing the kind of alternative education, competency-based, experiential education, self-directed education. It's very unique in the marketplace. We were really the first to do that anywhere in the country. It's become all the globe now, and we're still doing it 50 years later, and still doing it well. We're really proud to be carrying the name of our city and our college. We've got hundreds of students, faculty, staff here who are proud to be residents of Prescott, and we're looking forward to our next 50 years. And I want to say that our enrollments last spring took a change. We're increasing enrollments for the first time in several years. They're larger again this fall, and we're projecting increased enrollments again next fall. We're in solid financial condition. Our dorms are full, and we're looking forward to the next 50 years here in Prescott. And our main celebration is going to be October 28th, Friday evening. We've got a barbecue. You're all invited. Please show up, and we look forward to our next 50 years here. Thank you.
Item D, proclaiming September 21st, 2016 as International Day of Peace. And Mary Steamhulk is here to accept.
Who's here for peace? Don't all stand up at once.
I'm here. Hi. Hello.
This is Mary. You're both Marian?
I'm Mary.
Mary and Mary. Okay. Well, it's my honor to read the proclamation for the International Day of Peace, September 21st, 2016. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains a guiding inspiration of humanity. And whereas, on August 27th, 1928, the United States joined other nations in adopting the Cullin-Brianne Pact, an agreement to outlaw war. The pact was signed in Paris at the French Foreign Ministry by the representatives of 62 countries. And whereas, in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace, a devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas, the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations and people to honor a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the International Day of Peace. And whereas, Prescott supports the observance of the International Day of Peace, which affirms our vision, a vision of our world at peace, and fosters cooperation among all individuals, organizations, and nations as members of a worldwide human community. And whereas, global crises impel all students to work, all citizens to work toward converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into the practical reality of a culture of peace for future generations, locally and globally. Now therefore, I, Harry B. Oberg, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2016, as the International Day of Peace. And urge all government departments and agencies, organizations, schools, community groups, and individuals in our city to commemorate in an appropriate manner the International Day of Peace and promote the expansion of aspirations of a culture of peace this day and every day. This may include community service projects, cultural exhibits and performances, a moment of silence, ringing of bells, sharing the universal message, "May peace prevail on earth," at noon, vigils, religious services in our places of worship, direct actions, and other education and public awareness activities in order to help establish a global embracement of peace in our homes, our communities, and among nations. And Mary, would you like to say a few words, or Marian, about this week? Thank you. Thanks, Jane. And thank you for having the proclamation. We celebrate it, and we're excited about this week. We being the Prescott Peace Builders. And I've got to ask you to stand up, you people that came today as our peace builders. We are working very hard to promote, to inspire, and educate people in Prescott about peace building, and to see ourselves as, and our community, as a place where peace and nonviolence is the way that we try and solve our problems. And so, last year, we did the International Day of Peace Candle Vigil, and this year, on the Day of Peace, which is Wednesday, we'll do that. And we're making a whole week of experiences around peace, and Marian is going to share that as well.
We'd like to invite the city council members and the entire audience. I have a little card here.
Yeah, I'm passing it.
Thank you. That has the whole schedule of events, starting this Sunday with the Backyard Peace Party at Granite Peak, and it runs all the way through next Friday, where we will be at Kayla's Hands Playground for the Family Peace Celebration. So there's some wonderful events happening. There is a whole stack of cards outside the door that have the whole calendar, and we invite anybody and everybody to join in celebrating peace with us.
Item D, proclaiming September 24th and 25th, 2016 as Prescott's Oktoberfest. And I believe former council member Coop Neau is here to accept.
Thank you. So Chris, would you like to come up? And Marco? Oh, okay.
Chris, do you have a speech?
Hello. How are you? Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Hello. Hello, sir. Welcome. Well, it's my honor to read the proclamation for Prescott's Oktoberfest, September 24th and 25th, 2016. Whereas the City of Prescott is celebrating four years of our sister relationship with our sister city, Zeitz Germany. And whereas the sister city group, made up of interested local citizens, promotes greater cultural understanding through a high school student exchange, mutual visits to each other's cities, and promotion of international friendships. And whereas, Prescott's Oktoberfest is a fun way to raise money to make it easier for local students to travel to Zeitz in the spring for a three-week exchange, where they attend classes with their German host students and visit historical sites and cities. Whereas, the biggest benefit from the exchange, however, is the lifelong friendships made between the students and an understanding of that even across borders, we are all more the same than different. And whereas, this year's event will feature music, a variety of food, and over 30 different beer booths featuring some of Germany's finest beers. And whereas, local brewer, the Prescott Brewing Company, will be producing a beer just for this event, all under a 40-by-120-foot tent. Now therefore, Harry Oberg, Mayor of the City of Prescott, proclaims September the 24th and 25th, 2016, as Prescott's Oktoberfest. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. As members of the Prescott Zeitz Board Members Association, we greatly appreciate the proclamation and the benefits derived for our association, which enables and helps local exchange students to get to the sister city in Germany next year and in the future. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Presentations, Chamber of Commerce introduction of new businesses.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Neil Sneller, and I'm the membership director for the Prescott Chamber. This weekend, we're celebrating a big event out at the Prescott Valley Event Center. We've partnered with the Prescott Valley Chamber to bring you the Fourth Annual Business and Lifestyles Expo, and that's Saturday and Sunday, and that's a free event open to the public. We have our fifth annual Meals on Wheels Golf Tournament, and we've partnered with Prescott area young professionals. And if you'd like to learn more, register to golf, or become a sponsor, please visit P A Y P GolfTournament.com. And our next mixer is Thursday, September 29th, at Friendly Pines Camp. Now, we're deviating from our usual format to show our appreciation for the local school teachers and staff. Friendly Pines is providing a full barbecue dinner, and all the door prizes will be given to the local teachers. People are encouraged to bring prizes for teachers and their classrooms. This month, the Prescott Chamber is proud to welcome these new members. Champions for Children Foundation, English Garden Tea Room, Far From Folsom, Garland Retirement Coaching, Hartz Art and Decor, Lazarium Med Spa, Prescott E-News, Sportsman Warehouse, Arizona Rangers Lonesome Valley Company, Embark Recovery, Humana, Napa Auto Parts Prescott, Premier Development, Twin Arrows Navajo Casino, and finally, Wallachan Volk. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. One item has been asked to be pulled. Councilwoman Wilcox asks one item to be pulled for further discussion. Go ahead and read the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the August 5th, August 9th, August 18th, August 19th, August 22nd, August 30th, and September 6th council meetings. Item B, adoption of ordinance number 4987-1525, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving and authorizing lease number GS09PLAZ03483 between the City of Prescott and the United States of America. Item C, approval to permit temporary rock-crushing activities within the Lakeview Plaza subdivision. Item D, approval of agreement with Dick and Fritz Design Group for renovation of the grand staircase at the Granite Street Garage in the amount not to exceed $19,500. Item E, adoption of ordinance number 4994-1532, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of miscellaneous surplus property, including vehicles and equipment, and authorizing the Field and Facilities Services Director to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sales. Item F, approval of supply contract for 65-gallon residential containers from Auto Environmental in the estimated amount, total amount of $120,000. Item G, approval of city contract number 2017-088 with Simpson Norton Corporation for the purchase of irrigation system and other miscellaneous repair parts for the Antelope Hills Golf Course in the city parks in an estimated amount of $65,000. Item H, approval of ACCER Trust Board Grants for fiscal year 2017. Item I, approval to accept two grants totaling $35,000 awarded to the Prescott Police Department by the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety for DUI and aggressive driving enforcement. Item J, approval of payment to trauma intervention programs of Arizona Incorporated in the amount of $23,906 for fiscal year 2017. Item K, adoption of ordinance number 4993-1531, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a land lease agreement, city contract number 2017-083 with Verizon Wireless LLC for a wireless communications facility located on city-owned property known as 1131 Country Club Drive, and authorizing the Mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item L, approval amendment number two to city contract number 2015-186A2 for the North Washington and Churchill Street Reconstruction Project with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $20,635. Item M, award of city contract number 2017-077 to Van Contracting Incorporated for the Robinson Tank Demolition and Removal Project in the amount of $45,900. I'll go ahead and read item N. N is approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2016-173A1, a professional services agreement with Katherine Adams in the estimated amount of $6,400. Item O, adoption of resolution number 4351-1560, approving a memorandum of understanding among the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, the Yavapai Fair Foundation Incorporated, and Prescott Frontier District Incorporated, outlining roles and commitments regarding production of an annual county fair at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds. Item P is the adoption of ordinance numbers 4998-1536, 4999-1537, 5000-1538, and 5001-1539, amending conservation easements granted to the Central Arizona Land Trust. And item Q is approval to perform night work on Prescott Lakes Parkway and SR 69 St. Leto Drive, Commerce Drive, and Willow Creek Road.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items on the consent agenda, items A through M and O through Q.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, we'll discuss item N.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this item needs further discussion by the council and more information. Last year, during the mid-year budget cuts, we had to make some painful cuts. Some people lost their jobs. One of those people was our communications director, and we were given an explanation that there's a way we can get by without this. And not too long after that, someone was hired under a $10,000 contract, and then now this contract is being expanded or extended without our typical requirement of professional, or not professional, but commercial insurance. And I think there's an overlap here with the functions of the management analysts, who we were told would be assuming some of those communications responsibilities. So I would like to hear more explanation before we take a vote on this.
City Manager, you want to go ahead?
Well, I can provide some of that information. Allison Zomes can as well. Council will recall first that the budget adjustments represented an action of the prior city council, not this city council. Upon this city council, and of course, we have some new members or council members who became part of the council in November of 2015, one of the things that became immediately apparent was that we not only needed a strategic shift in city communications, and that subject was discussed at length during the budget process, culminating in the creation of the community outreach position, which, as the council knows, is the hiring or filling of that vacancy is being held in abeyance. So the adopted budget for fiscal year 2017 does include a communications position. The details of that communication position were deferred by the council as a whole to when the new city manager comes and takes a look at it and determines what he needs in terms of strategic communications, and then has a dialogue with the city council, presumably, about that, and then moves to fill that position in whatever form it may take. So, you know, so from the staff perspective, the council has approved a budget with a communications person or position in it. The scope of that position remains to be determined. However, in the meantime, there has certainly been an interest on the part of council to be more visible in certain respects, which has, among other things, resulted in continuation of production of the Prescott Today Show and so forth, and those are specialized skills. And that's what this particular contract is for. We look at it as responding to the communication interest of council and as a bridge until that budgeted position is filled.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Well, could you explain what this person will do?
Well, what this person has been doing is reinstated the Prescott Today Show, which we were not doing, even when we had the prior position that was eliminated in place, which takes a lot of time to plan for, to get the questions set up, to organize who's going to be there, to work with the staff at the Prescott Media Center. to be there, to work with the staff at the Prescott Media Center, to get all of that scheduling going for a monthly TV show is a huge part of this, as well as scheduling and then strategizing for the radio outreach that we do with the Prescott Today Show. So it's a very targeted use of this position for some of the more strategic communications items. The city manager's office staff that exists still help do all of the press release, most, I would say 95% of the press releases, Facebook, the city's website, and all of those things. And so that, along with the other efforts that are going on in the office, you know, those could continue, but the Prescott Today Show was added after we eliminated a position. And so I would say the primary thrust of this is to work on that Prescott Today Show and targeted pieces that are related to some of that strategic communication that take a fair amount of dedicated time.
And the other question was, why doesn't this contract include a requirement for insurance? John, maybe you could answer that question.
Business decision. I mean, most of our contracts, or usually our contracts, include an insurance requirement. But I think there is a business decision made that the cost of, you know, liability, just as a qualifier, even though this is technically, this is what we call is a professional services contract, this is not a professional service that would make the person eligible for errors or omissions type of insurance.
Right.
So it basically would be just general liability insurance.
Right.
I think it's a business decision balancing the sort of smaller fee contemplated by the contract and the cost of insurance, but it's ultimately up to the council to make that decision. I don't think it creates, I don't think this position creates a significant potential for exposure, liability exposure. It's basically just sort of a person. There's not, you know, there's not really any product that comes out of it that's a concrete product. I don't mean concrete literally, I mean tangible product.
Any further question?
That's it.
Yeah. Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of concerned, and I'm not going to try to stem the vocabulary, but I thought we just had agreed. I understand it's for communications, but we had agreed to wait for the new city manager, and I just, I just would rather wait for the new city manager to do this.
If I may, this is nothing, we've been doing this since February, so this really is a decision of whether we're going to continue to do that Prescott Today Show for that bridge period or not. That's really what this is. It's not a huge shift in our strategic communication effort. It's a bridge that could be ended within 10 days. So if the city manager, new city manager comes on October 10th, wants to post a new position by October 15th, hires somebody by November 15th, then the remainder of this contract would go away, and that person would take on the responsibilities of not just the Prescott Today Show, but whatever other strategic direction was created with that new position in consultation with the city manager and the city council.
Councilwoman Ohr?
Yes, I guess I just want to jump in here and say, we have been, this position since February has provided, I think, some very good communication to our community. I don't think we can just say we're going to have a void of communication until we get the new city manager. And I believe Catherine Adams, through the Prescott Today, the show, the radio, we have to deliver our message. And I believe that it's crucial that we have this position, that we don't just go dark until we get the new city manager on board. So I'm very much in support of this.
Any other questions, comments with the council?
Well, I'll just say that, you know, when I became mayor, I felt it was important to have outreach to the community, and that's one of the reasons why I reactivated the Prescott Today Show and having a one-hour segment on KQNA. Also, we're putting in articles to The Courier and also to the Quad City Business News. And Catherine's been very helpful in arranging all that. I know we had, recently, we had a very good video put out on Parks and Recreation, which I think really sells Prescott. And it's up on video, I know, so that people can see that. And I think we even have it on our website at Prescott.
It's on, actually featured on the homepage of Prescott-AZ.gov right now.
Yeah. It was very well done with the Prescott Today Show, so, you know, I think that was pretty cheap advertisement, really. And, you know, I see this position as being somewhat different from the one that the city manager is going to hire when he gets here, and that's going to be a full-time position. This is just a part-time contract position to help us get through this period of time until he gets on board and has an opportunity to do a job announcement and a selection for a person that's actually going to be full-time. So I hope that we can get support for one end and continue to have the outreach to the community.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number nine on this consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Okay, have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes four to two. Councilwoman Wilcox and Councilman Lozelle dissenting.
Thank you.
Okay, item two, liquor license consent agenda.
Item two, mayor and council, on today's liquor license consent agenda, there are four applications for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License. Item A: Taste of the Wild Prescott Animal Park Association. Item B: 50th Anniversary Celebration Prescott College. Item C: Yavapai County Mounted Sheriff's Posse. And item D: Prescott Mountain Bike Alliance. All four of these applications have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to recommend approval of liquor license consent agenda A through D.
Second. Do I have a motion, a second vote, please?
Councilwoman Ohr? Passes six to zero.
We move on to regular agenda. Item A.
Item A: Adoption of ordinance number 5002-1540. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title III Building Regulations, Chapter 3-10-AF Incentive Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor Olbergen, council members. I'm just going to get the city website up really quickly and go from there. Thank you to, I'm Leslie Grazer, the Water Resource Manager for the city, and today I'd like to share Water Resource Management's background for considering a code update related to rainwater harvesting. The city established its rain, or its rebate program overall in 1992. Since that time, multiple code updates have occurred. It was in 2009 that the city introduced the rainwater harvesting component to the program. For the 2015 through 2018 time period, the city has continued to offer all sorts of rebates to the community, but the management looked at it and said, we'd like to really focus on outdoor watering from the 2015 to 2018 time period. And so this code update supports that. I'd like to take you to where we house these things on the website briefly. This is the conservation webpage. The rebate program is located here. And part of the investments that we've made is to have a virtual, well, water conservation house, basically. So our graphics have improved. This is rainwater harvesting right here on the website. And as well, let me back up one, is water smart landscaping. And so, as you know, rainwater harvesting helps you offset your potable water use at your property. This Prescott Water Smart Landscaping is available to the public, not just to the city customers. At this location, it includes rainwater harvesting landscape use, so not only the infrastructure somebody can add to their home, but swaling and other land contouring. We provide galleries. Let me move to that. This is rainwater harvesting. So you can see right now, we have a picture that looks very industrial, but you will know that you've seen at local stores that it's really, I guess I just looked over at Councilman Blair, but, you know, he has an underground storage tank, but they've become very decorative as well. So we think this is an opportunity that would be helpful for the public to continue on this path of working on water conservation, whether it be inside or outside. So Water Resource Management recommends a code update to increase the rainwater harvesting cistern opportunity from 10 cents per gallon to 50 cents per gallon, with a minimum capacity of 100 gallons and a maximum lifetime cistern rebate of $500 per property. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, this is a great thing that we're doing. I just have one question, and maybe you, because you're ears to the ground more than most in this area. I've heard rumor that SRP would like to claim all of this water. They wanted to get to the Verde so they can take it. Have you heard anything like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Councilman Blair?
I was glad to see this on the agenda. Knowing what mine can do, I know that I utilize about 1,000 gallons a month in rainwater harvesting, and I can only imagine what my wife would say due to the fact that she pays the water bill of, she had an extra 12,000 gallons of water a year on that water bill. So it makes a difference on a tiered system, it makes a difference that the city of Prescott is not spending electricity to move the water from the Big Chino into Prescott, it makes a difference of us not treating that water out there. Anytime you have an opportunity to do any of these systems, and prior to being creative and putting an underground system in, I was able to purchase very inexpensively 50-gallon empty oil drums from Bennett Oil and laid them on the side and then tied the tops of them together so that each one would water independently out of the bottom of the barrel, and put those on a bank to use as bank restraints for dirt. So you can get pretty creative with a lot of that stuff, and now with an incentive to do those kind of things from the city, I hope more people do that in the future.
Mayor, put them.
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, having been here at Ground Zero when we started water conservation as a policy within the city limits, I think this is a good thing. I mean, we've worked, come a long way in the last 14, 15 years with how we perceived encouraging people to water less ground in a quasi-arid area, not have as much grass in a quasi-arid area, and to be a little bit more water-conscious in an area that God graced a little differently than he did Florida. So I like it. I think it's good.
Yeah, questions, comments from the council? I think we also have brochures up at the front talking about water conservation. Is this included in that brochure right now, or we're going to have to add that?
We do have the rainwater harvesting brochure available, as well as a variety of things the public can, you know, work on as fits their lifestyle.
Okay. I'm an old-fashioned guy, I like a pamphlet, so anyway. Any comments from the public on this?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm here to read an official statement.
Could you give your name and?
Oh, sorry.
Please.
Leslie Hoy. I'm here on behalf of the Citizens Water Advocacy Group to make an official statement from our board. The Citizens Water Advocacy Group next month will begin our 15th year promoting a sustainable water future in the Upper Verde River Basin and the Prescott Active Management Area by educating the public, encouraging citizen action, and advocating for responsible governmental decision-making. We support this proposed increase in the rainwater harvesting cistern rebate and lowering the minimum qualifying capacity to 100 gallons. The council agenda memo for this item states, quote, "Research indicates rainwater harvesting is an effective tool for promoting water conservation and acts as a catalyst to increase citizen awareness of individual water use. That has also been our experience. Last April, CWAG meeting where Barnabas Kane gave an excellent program on rainwater harvesting was attended by 91 area residents. A video of Barnabas Kane's presentation is in the video archive on the CWAG website at CWAGAZ.org. A video of our May field tour on rainwater harvesting and drought-tolerant plants is also in the video archive at CWAGAZ.org. And that includes some really nice footage of Prescott College. They're doing amazing, amazing things with both drought-tolerant plants and rainwater harvesting. During the tour, CWAG member Fred Oswald demonstrated how to use 50-gallon used food-grade drums, you're not supposed to use oil, purchased at the Cal Ranch store for $37 each, to collect rainwater for irrigation. In addition to the video of his demonstration, Fred's rainwater harvesting tips with step-by-step instructions are in the current issues section of our website at CWAGAZ.org. Of course, the city's conservation website, PrescottWaterSmart.com, contains lots of great information on water smart landscaping and watering. Last but not least, the Citizen Water Advocacy Group invites you and the public to attend our October 8th meeting entitled Regional Water Issues: Past, Present, and Future. We have lots of new residents in our town who don't really know the history, they don't know the issues, and we're kind of starting all over in our 15th year to educate people. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the increased water, rainwater harvesting incentive. Thanks.
Thanks, Leslie. Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 5002-1540.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Item B.
Item 3B, adopt or approval of SI 16-002, site plan for a 200-unit phased multifamily apartment complex at 2051 Willow Lake Road, and water service agreement number 16-008 for Phase 1. City contract number 2017-009. Zoning is multifamily high, APN 106-13-031H. Property owner is Rand &amp; Associates.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The subject property is 7.5 acres. It is zoned multifamily high, would enable up to 240 apartment units. It's contiguous to Temple, Brith, Shalom, to the east, Basa School to the south, and the Prescott Commerce Park to the west. The current use of the property is the Dell's View Mobile Home Park, and I think many of you are familiar with that park. It's listed on the distressed mobile home parks list in the Community Development Department, and the park is not connected to city sewer or water, and some of the individual sites have had failing septic systems over the years. The site plan for the proposed project comprises six buildings, which were proposed to be phased in development, the two to the front, two more in the center portion of the property, and then two to the rear. There is a seventh building in the center of the project, which is intended to be a community room, an indoor pool, and a community media center. And the apartments comprise 90 one-bedroom apartments, 92-bedroom, 23-bedroom apartments, and the primary access is off of Broner Way, located in the northeast corner of the project. After our meeting June 30th, the planning zoning commission made a unanimous recommendation to approve the site plan and the council's water issue. Subcommittee has recommended approval of the water service application in the amount of 12.5 acre-feet, which is groundwater, and 12.25 acre-feet of alternate water to support the first phase of 99 multifamily dwelling units. Now, the 12.5 acre-feet of groundwater allocation is actually credited to the 25 existing residences that are currently on-site because the property is served by a well. And subsequent to the water service agreement, the well will be abandoned as a part of the water service agreement. So the applicant is aware that this allocation is for Phase 1 only, and that there is no obligation to provide water for Phase 2. Would that make you aware that Rick Nestor, who is the applicant and the agent for this project, is here today, should you have any questions for him?
Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Two, two things. One, first addressed to you, Tom. When this project was, I know, first proposed at PAC, that I had heard, because I wasn't able to attend, that there was maybe some concerns over secondary fire egress. Was that addressed?
That was addressed. And in fact, at the time, the number of apartments was greater than 200, and that secondary ingress egress requirement is greater than 200 apartments. So they did look at alternate locations on the site where they might be able to put in a secondary access, mainly off of Willow Lake Road, but they decided to keep the number at 200 or less.
Okay. And I guess my second one is to our liaisons, our two liaisons here to our water board. Was this addressed at the water, and everything's okay there?
Yeah, we Yeah, we fully vetted, went through the process at several meetings, looking at what's available, what wasn't available, the advantages of retiring the well, the advantages of potentially getting septic leakage from going back into the downstream stuff, things like that. So we looked at things solely limited to the use of water. We don't, you know, get into land use and traffic use and all that other stuff, but based on what we have in the portfolio of both alternative water and assured water. Okay, remembering that some of this is subject to assured water, which if we don't use it, it stays in the ground, but on the other hand, if we use it, it doesn't come off the alternative budget, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Did I miss anything, Steve?
Yeah, I think probably the real big part about this for me was the fact that that old area in there, it used to be called Harmon's Meat Packers back in the day, and it was ranchland, and there was wells in there and old septic tanks. So the part of the reason why we have the influx of all that stuff that goes into Watson Willow Lake or leaking, leach fields and septic tanks into, anytime you can get a quality project that we desperately need in this community, also retiring a well and putting everything internally back into our system to be treated is a positive thing. So this is a good project all the way around.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
I have some questions for Mr. Nestor if you wouldn't mind coming up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, thank you very much for providing the pictures. That helps a lot. What we get in our packets looks like that. I can't read it, not even with a magnifying glass.
I favor pictures, too.
Yeah. So first question is, where's the parking?
Well, we have more than enough parking on the site right now, but if you see the site plan, it's kind of hard to, yeah, there you go. Tom is showing it. It's all around the buildings. It's right now, it is surface parking.
Okay.
Okay. And around the perimeter of the building, site plan as well.
Okay. And are there any areas designated for playground equipment for children?
Well, we're going to have, the bio retention field that we have in the front of the project is a playground as well, along with, we might be diverting the water, the surface water into Willow Lake. You know, so we have, we have playgrounds in the middle. Yeah, that's up in there. And then in the middle of the project, we have a pool, we have a sand volleyball, we have pickleball, we have a bike garage, and we have an indoor facility, a full kitchen with a weight room, a fitness center, computer room, and ping pong and TV.
When can I move in?
Yeah. Soon, I hope.
Okay. Thank you. That's great. Thanks.
Councilwoman Ohr?
Yes, Mr. Nestor, this is a very nice project, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I agree with Councilman Blair, anytime we can improve, and this will be an improvement in that area. My only concern, I've had some feedback from folks that are concerned about the additional traffic that will go onto Willow Lake Road. However, I know that we're looking at that because I'm on the bike pedestrian committee, and that's been an issue for us already because of Basis School and everybody trying to turn out off of Prescott Lakes Parkway. So I know that that's, that is already on our horizon to look at, and so I think this will just add to that, so thank you.
Yeah.
It'll make us get busy on it sooner.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public?
Mayor, Council, my name is Phil Good. I'm a commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We looked at this project, and I would like to say it is a major improvement for what is there now. However, my personal concerns, and I brought this to the commission's attention, is the impact on traffic volume. The commission doesn't hear from the traffic department on what the volume impact will be or if there are any plans to mitigate the volume. My estimation is it'll probably add at least 30% to the traffic volume on Willow Lake Road, and I commend the developer for at least putting in a dedicated left-turn lane on that Broner, Broner Way connection with Willow Lake Road, so that should help some. But you look at the very next issue on the agenda, which is the antelope crossings development. That is bound to funnel more traffic through the roundabout there by Willow's, I mean, Hugh's Supply into Willow Lake Road, so that will add to that impact. And I was, of course, at the Water Services Committee looking at the Granite Dells development, which is beginning its 700-plus unit build-out, which will also add traffic volume to Willow Lake Road. So I would like to see a more of a strategic traffic plan looked at rather than just these individual developments as they incrementally increase traffic volume without having a pretty good longer-term plan on how we're going to handle this traffic volume. It seems with the alternative water supply caps and expirations that there's an acceleration of some development going on now, and I think it's time to really look at a more of a strategic plan for traffic.
Yeah, thank you, Phil.
Thanks.
Next.
Hi, my name is Robert Cravell, and I have a couple of concerns about this development. I actually live off of Willow Creek Road or Willow Lake Road, and believe me, in the last couple of years of traffic on there, trying to make a left-hand turn on there become a pain. And, you know, what are you going to do about it? You going to widen the road? You going to make more access? Or you're just going to have to fight your way out? And, you know, like I said, it's getting to be worse and worse every day. And number two, the main concern I have about this, all these developments here, is water. Okay? I mean, I really like it up there because I go to Watson Lake or Willow Lake, or let's call it Willow Dust Bowl right now. And, you know, every time I go, they're sucking water out of the lake. And I thought that lake was going to be for recreational use. You can't put a boat on Willow Lake, no way. Watson Lake, I mean, there's lots of rocks, lots of hazards. And, you know, I mean, I came from California and I was a general contractor there, and I still ascribe to the theory greed is good. Okay? I mean, I'm all in for that. But it's getting to the point now where unless you guys really stop and think about what's going to happen here, I mean, you know, the rainfall kind of fills the lake, but the snowfall sustains it. And we haven't had any snowfall here for a long time. And I'm not one of those climate change guys. Believe me, I'm not. But we have to have some sustained good weather to make all this work. And I think, and until it does, we're going to have to stop. I mean, all this stuff's going to have to just put on temporary hold until it really comes out right. I mean, I came from California, Southern California. My brother lives in the San Joaquin Valley, and they have drought up there. They've had no snow in the Sierras. But I can tell you right now, a lot of Cali, and I have friends that are farmers up there, and one of them's a rice farmer up in Calusa. And most of the California water problems aren't caused by drought. They're caused by stupidity. You know, they've sucked all the water. The farmers paid for the aqueduct system, and the city sucked all the water out there. Farmers quit farming. So they sell their land, they have more development. I mean, it's a dust bowl up there, and it's getting worse. So, and like I said, Willow Lakes has become a mosquito, a mosquito pond. There's nothing there. And that's my concern. I mean, I might sound negative, it might sound bad, but you have to think about what's going on. There's too many negatives to all these projects going on. You know, they're building all that stuff up there on the hill up there, and people are complaining about the rock crusher dust, and it's just, you know, Prescott's a good town to live in, but if it becomes like LA, why live here?
I think we have one question from Councilman Blair.
I do. For the city manager, and the point's well taken, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to the traffic on Willow Lake Road, when it comes to the intersection of Prescott Lakes Parkway, at what point in time do we do an analysis on that roadway surface, understanding where the gentleman was talking about where the mobile home parks are up on top of the hill? They have a right-of-way road that can funnel traffic to a major intersection to provide relief with a stoplight. At what point do we have our engineering people start looking at doing something different than a two-lane road?
Well, let me go back a little bit. The city has a general plan. City has, as part of the general plan, a transportation element. City participates, and essentially you have a bi-metropolitan planning organization, which has a traffic model which is updated from time to time. So all of the major thoroughfares are monitored for level of service, and we have a Public Works Department that has a professional traffic engineer that also does things like, that takes traffic counts periodically and so forth. Again, monitoring volumes and levels of service at key intersections, one of which is Prescott Lakes Parkway and Willow Lake Road. And you'll recall that I think the city traffic engineer has spoken to the council or addressed the council on where we are with respect to the warrants. Warrants meaning the circumstances there that would according to, that would according to standard methodology justify signalizing that intersection. I think the city traffic engineer is here today. I think I saw him come in here, so he can speak to it more specifically. But, you know, we're not winging it with every project that comes through. The fact that the site plan got to the city council, that site plan has gone through methodical reviews of all the things that we're talking about here, whether it's traffic, whether it's water, whether it's land use, zoning compatibility and all that, all those reviews have been done. And if, in fact, there was a deficiency, that deficiency would have been addressed by either some type of improvement, some modification of the project, or basically not being recommended for action.
That's why I asked the question. I think the public needs to hear that when we have a development like this come in, we have to do a traffic impact analysis on that, what will take place. But at what point in time, if I can ask you, Ian, we're to the point now, being in that area quite a bit, to understand that a lot of times on Prescott Lakes Parkway, there's no less than 10, 12 cars backed up trying to make a left-hand turn onto Willow Lake Road. At what point in time do you start preparing the conduits and knowing it's imminent that we're going to put in a stoplight there? When does that happen?
Councilmen, mayor and council, we have, like the city manager indicated, we have been monitoring that. We've been doing periodic warrant studies through time. Since Basis opened, you know, the traffic, as most people who live there will attest, has been increasing. To this, at this point, it hasn't met a warrant. So while there is some delay, it's pretty much limited to the inlet of classes and mainly the outlet of classes. But we have been preparing. We, we've looked at it for right-of-way constraints as far as what type of intersection we would do. We already have some conceptual drawings because there's overhead power lines. There's trail considerations because we have the circle trail there. We've been talking about this at P Back, the whole area and all this growth, we've been talking about it. So we're actively monitoring Prescott Lakes and Willow Lake, specifically seeing if it's going to meet a warrant. I'll also add that we have funds budgeted in this fiscal year that we could, you know, react to the installation need of a signal if it warrants one. But we don't want to go forward with something that's not warranted. Additionally, this site was reviewed by Public Works. We worked with the developer on the alternative design that you see here. It doesn't show a lot of details, but this design actually takes away two existing intersections that are there today. There's two intersections. There's Broner, and there's one actually a little further to the west. I have something that's kind of conceptual, but it'll kind of, at least give you a little better picture of what's going on here in a bigger scale. But we looked at this with the developer and worked with them to develop where the intersection would be to try to minimize having four intersections all right next to each other. Currently, you have an intersection here, you have one at Broner, you've got this one that's going to be a storage, I think it's a storage facility, then you've got a county street right up in here. And so we worked with them to provide additional right-of-way in here to get individual lefts, widen it out so that we can have protected lefts in and out of the new sites. So we are looking at these things to try to improve the situation. We're monitoring whether or not there needs to be a widening. You know, Simpo, the models at this point, this is just infill growth of our existing planning. So while the volumes do increase, they're not outside the range of what the road can handle, and then we do improvements like this to try to increase the operational efficiency and the safety. So, long answer, I'm trying to cover multiple things I heard, and, you know, from a traffic standpoint, I think this is an improvement at this site specifically. And then in the larger area, we are monitoring things, trying to see what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ohr?
So Ian, I know this is going to be on our agenda this week for the pedestrian bicycle. Is this possible? I understand it doesn't warrant a continuous red, a continuous traffic light, but isn't it possible to do during off-hours flashing lights and then at peak hours when it's almost impossible to turn left onto Willow Lake? Isn't it possible then to activate the light?
We've, that actually has been mentioned, that kind of system, and we've looked into it. At this point, I personally am not recommending that we go to that because most of our drivers are not, they're not, they're not familiar with a signal that would be flashing red during certain hours and then activated during other hours. So I have concerns over the safety that that might cause during times when it's not in place because most people, it's just, it's a unique, that's a different kind of use of a traffic signal that we don't really have here. But we have considered that option as well.
How about a sensor, then? It would only go on, I mean, there are places like that that we have. The signal activates then when there's a car there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What you, the problem with putting any signal there is that there will be a time when one car comes up during off-peak hours. So there's, there's times about 7 o'clock at night when you come on Willow Lake, and there's hardly a car that comes on Prescott Lakes. Well, that will be monitored by a sensor, and it will only turn if that car comes. But right now, you don't stop Willow Lake for that one car. They just drive up, all the other cars go, and they go. With a signal, that would activate the signal, turn the light red, stop cars on Willow Lake. So that's why we're looking at all these things to see what can be done. But certainly, we're not ignoring that situation, and we're trying to see what can be done to improve it.
Thank you, Ian. Yeah.
Chuck Queen, Prescott, City of Prescott. I have a question for the traffic engineer. I know that, I think I heard, that there would be a 30% increase in the traffic on Willow Creek. I think that's what I heard earlier in this scenario, and I'm curious if the warrant or anything is taking that 30% increase, or is it based on your last monitoring?
Mayor and council, did you want me to address that?
Go ahead.
So I think that was a comment from one of the people in the audience. So that's not exactly correct. I will say that we kind of have a, we have an understanding of the traffic that would be generated out of here, and it likely won't generate 30% increase in traffic, but there will be an increase. The problem with warrants is we can react to the warrant relatively quickly. This, this site is quite a bit, it's quite a ways from being developed, and so to spend $200,000 to $300,000 on a traffic signal based on a future condition which may or may not happen, there's also issues over distribution of traffic, where people go. So whatever traffic comes out of this site, a certain percentage will go to the roundabout, a certain percentage will go south, north, and west. So we're not using traffic volumes, per se, to monitor that, the signal warrant, and primarily we don't have an issue with enough traffic on Willow Lake. Willow Lake has enough traffic. It's that Prescott Lakes does not generate enough traffic to trigger the warrant. It only has high peaks during school let-out and when school is going in. So Willow Lake meets the volume warrants, and it will continue to meet those warrants. It's the side streets that you have to watch. So, but again, to the residents who live there, we are monitoring things, and this will have increased traffic. But we feel like the improvements happening here can be mitigated, and it will work well at this time, so.
Councilwoman Wilcox? Councilwoman Wilcox.
So somewhere along the road to Damascus, I was converted, and I really like roundabouts. So when I move into Prescott Lake Villas, and I can't make a left turn onto Willow Lake Road, I'm going to figure out it's much easier to turn right and go to the roundabout just around the corner and then come back. I do that all the time when I park along Highway 89 and go to the overlook, maybe I, you know, cheat on my parking pass and hike down to the lake. Well, I'm not going to turn left, I'm going to turn right and go up to the roundabout and come back. And I think, you know, that's a reasonable alternative for people to think about.
Any other comments, questions from the public?
Hi, my name is Doug Horsley. I own a business that's just north of Watson Lake called Point of Rocks Campground, and we do have concern over the traffic that is increasing there through high-density projects such as this. I already find it difficult to turn left out of Willow Lake Road onto 89. The roundabout is, during high-traffic volumes, is a difficult intersection already. And I think the overall plan, even though it's zoned, multifamily, high-density, I think the Willow Lake and Watson Lake areas are such a gem that I find it a shame to put such high-density projects in this area, and the effects that people in those communities will have on these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Charlene Norman. I do live in Delphu Mobile Home Park. I'd like to start by saying Woodsmen's property first needs to take care of the people there. We have 99 and 1/2-year leases there, as most of you probably know. They were offered by contract, a sum of money, and it was not followed through. Our park, I heard someone mention about our septic systems. That's because it has not been taken care of. I was the manager for the last two years. We did a lot of work in this place. The reason why Ford was condemned is because the right people was not hired to do the job right. And traffic, it would be an absolute mess. I really, you know, would like the council to think about the people that have been there for 45 years, the 99 and 1/2-year leases, need to be taken care of first. It was promised, and it needs to be done. There's other things I'd like to say, but I'm just too nervous. So, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the public?
My name is Sherry Reed, and I also live in the park. We own our mobile, rent the property. My husband's lived in the park for over 35 years. I know that we are personally, and I believe that other people in the park also are looking at ways to go ahead and get out of the park, but we cannot do this overnight, we cannot do this in a few months. Personally, for us, it involves selling another house, taking the proceeds, buying a house, and then trying to sell the mobile. For both of our jobs, trying to find land to move it to in Chino or Dewey won't work for us. I don't think that anyone has really taken into consideration the people who live there And I think that really this should be tabled, and more discussion on this, at least give us some more time. I agree with everything that's been said about the traffic as well. And my husband and I, the one comment that we heard, we were just talking the other night, they're going to build a 200-unit apartment complex where we've got views of, it is beautiful around that area, but the mobile home park is not beautiful, it hasn't been taken care The owner has been completely negligent in his duties to us over many, many, many years. So I ask you to consider the people who live there now.
If I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Over the years, have you taken legal action against that owner?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, Charlene Norman. The change of land use that was done, it was also done in 2008. It went to court, so yes, there has been legal things done, and it was dismissed. Again, it was done in July of 2014 by an out-of-state resident, and he was not legally supposed to give the change of use relocation fund paperwork out, and I do have proof of that here.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any further discussion comments from the council? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I would like to recommend a motion, a move to approve site plan S/16-002, and move to approve water service agreement number 16-008, city contract 2017-009.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion, second, vote please.
Passes 6 to 0.
Next item?
Item C, approval of PP 16-001 preliminary plat for antelope crossing Deepwell Ranches Estate, PAD, a 255-lot single-family workforce housing planned area development, and water service agreement number WSA 16-007, city contract number 2017-018, zoning multifamily high, business regional industrial light, property owner James Deepwell Ranches, number 1 LLC, and overview of development plan for adjacent lands.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The request of Deepwell Ranches and Jim Chamberlain, the company that's processing this preliminary plat for antelope crossings, they'd like to give a presentation on their vision for this project and where it fits in the overall master planning that they're doing for this area out by the airport.
How long does this presentation go and take?
I told them of about five to 10 minutes, and we'll see if they can stick to that.
Okay. We got a lot of ground to cover here.
Understand, and I think they heard you, Mayor. So I'll introduce Trevor Barger with Esprit 2 Loci. He's a representative of Planning and Development Assistance Firm based in Scottsdale who's doing the planning for this project.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. As some of you know, we've been out talking with community leaders about this part of Prescott and its future, very excited about what to come there, but really early in our planning phases for the whole region, and looking at this as one of the first pieces of that development. As you know, you know, towards the highway that comes through there, the opportunity for retail, and as we move further north, thinking about what are the appropriate uses in this area. It's an area that has a lot of employment land set and ready to go right now, surrounding the airport, has nice settings for those sort of things, especially on the east side of the airport there, and to the north of us has a setting for a hospital. And so when we look at these sort of areas, we have this interesting question about the possibility of providing workforce housing. Now, workforce housing is an interesting category. We talk about it primarily as who we end up targeting and some of the categories that go on with it, but of course Fair Housing Act does not allow anybody selling housing to discriminate in who they sell housing to. There are very few categories, age, for example, that are allowed to be discriminated towards. And so we look at the setting and think about how it fits in the overall context of things. For folks in the workforce, the key ideas are to put them in locations where, one, it's affordable, and two, that it has accessibility to the things that they're going to need in life, such that you can reduce their dependence on the automobile. Now again, we all live in the western United States, growing up here in Arizona, I don't think the automobile will ever not be part of my life, but we try to make it such that it isn't an absolute requirement, more of, you know, something that makes life a little easier. And so as you see in this sort of setting, antelope crossing in this area right here, talking about Willow Creek here, and highways here and here, and we look in that sort of setting, and we talk about what could be around those areas, more employment, the retail opportunities, and all of those within a very simple proximity of that sort of setting. And then, of course, the airport and its uses. Long-term, as you think about the growth of this area, as if Prescott were to one day have mass transit in the form of a bus or something like that, it would make sense that the bus would connect, of course, the airport region, probably Emery Riddle and downtown, along with, you know, the hospital, and you have a pie. And so this is a route that one would expect those sort of things to be on and those sort of locations to be served by. When we think about the sort of land, we have a difficult time again because we can't discriminate, and so this type of product is offered lot and house together. It's a builder product, and so you are kind of looking at the type of house you're buying at the same time you're looking at the property you're buying. And so with that, you can kind of set the target market a little bit about who you're providing housing for. In that same sort of setting, you're trying to make it a affordable way to live, and so you can imagine the amenities that a designer like me loves to add to settings to make it a really incredible place to live, and you balance that against, of course, the fee that the ongoing community has to pay to regularly maintain those sort of things. And so you try to find a great balance between those, so you have a high quality of life, but one that's affordable to this sort of group, and you don't price out the very people you're trying to get and attract to this sort of area. And then provide them with other amenities that kind of connect that area together. In this setting, of course, as we're talking about the greater region, the walking trail system, of course, is a wonderful one, and Willow Creek Road already has two fantastic underpasses currently for the ranch operations, but those translate very well in other Arizona settings to be trail crossings. And so you can go under the roadway uninterrupted, and kids can get to a very large area of the community, not the little kids, but the, you know, junior high kids, without ever crossing a major street. And so it has great potential for having those sort of things in this type of setting. So next, I think we have Vic. Thank you, Vic.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Vic Chapman, 600 West Gurley. We're really excited about the possibility of antelope crossing here. As you heard from Mr. Barger, this is an ideal location for this, this type of development, not only for today but for years to come. The proposed antelope crossing is a 255 single-family development located on 50 acres, 11 acres of which will be dedicated as open space to the development itself. There are many, workforce housing has been kind of around in the, with the city, and it's been important to the city, and also to the landowner. Ron James of Deepwell Ranches has had a desire to have workforce housing, a place where people that work in Prescott can live in Prescott. And so we have put together a team to provide this development here that we feel meets that criteria. It will have homes in the price range of $185,000 to $225,000. That's our target range. As we started developing what we have here presented to you today, there were some difficulties in trying to come up with the right lot size, the right house size, the right price for the house. There's a whole bunch of things that go into that, and it's, it was, it was a tough job. We are utilizing the PAD process that is provided through the city to be able to make this particular plan work. Through the PAD process, we're requesting flexibility on the items that are on page two in your council agenda memo. Just in summary, there's a lot of detail in there, I won't bore you with that, but, because I'm sure you've read it, but we're asking for a slight reduction in the minimum lot size. We're asking for a slight modification of the standard street section while still providing a 28-foot pavement width, which is your standard. We're requesting a slight variation in the building setbacks and a 3% reduction in the open space requirement through the PAD process. In exchange for these concessions, Antelope Crossings offers the desired workforce housing, as I had mentioned, within the city limits. It offers a neighborhood fill with the open space throughout toward the southern end or the bottom of the page. Tom, can you slide that up just a little bit? We have a three-acre open space that we have added to the development since our P&amp;Z approval to increase our percentage and also to be able to provide more open space with the natural trail through it. This will be available to the, to the members of this community. Antelope Crossing also will generate construction sales tax revenues. The new Willow Creek alignment that has just opened recently, we will be widening that to put in a turn lane. Also, we will be installing a sidewalk as part of the connectivity, so as things are built, there will be that connectivity along Willow Creek. And also, it will provide new quality-built and attractive homes with a sense of community and style by Prescott's local home builder, Dorn Homes. We hope that you're as excited about this project as we are, and we hope to be able to receive your votes this afternoon as, that would allow us to continue forward. Right now, I'm going to let Dave Grounds show you just briefly the product that will be, is currently planned for this.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dave Grounds, Dorn Homes, 600 West Gurley Street, and I'm just going to take a couple minutes, because I know you're, we're trying to wrap through this. These are the visions of the homes that we want to offer in Antelope Crossing. They range from 1,343 square feet up to 2,181 square feet, and they'll provide the residents with three different architectural styles, and we brought in the same team that created Walden Ranch and that also created Astoria, which won best architecture in the United States. So we gave them the challenge of making it diverse, inspired, beautiful, that, so people are really excited to own a home here. So we go from a modern farmhouse elevation style to country estate, which has elements of craftsman, to prairie contemporary. So it's, it's a little more of a modern feel. And when you mix these with the different color variations, there's going to be approximately about 20 different types of home on, on different lots as you go through the community. So as people come home at night, everything looks different, it's inspired, everyone has a two-car garage, they have spacious patios in the back, and it just, we're excited about it. So the smallest home will have two bedrooms and two baths, and as they grow larger from that, it'll be, it can go up to a three-bedroom on the middle plan, and then all the way up to a four-bedroom plan if it's a young family, and we put the master and the kids' rooms upstairs, and then the great room and the powder room is downstairs. And we're going to make them energy efficient, we're going to make them healthy, we're going to build something that you and the community can be really proud of.
Yeah, we have a question, Councilwoman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Dorn Homes for everything they've done. They build a quality product in town. I just want to get that out there. But the council has been batting around for several months, this term workforce housing for, for water, and that's what this is about. It's not about, and I'm glad to see that, that we're working towards smaller lot sizes and setbacks. Jean and I have talked about that, and Steve and I have talked about that in the past, is altering that so we can get a quality home, smaller, on smaller lots. But I guess my concern is, because we haven't changed that, that terminology for water, because that's what this is about, to get that water service agreement. For workforce housing, what is to prevent an investor coming in, buying 10, 15 of these houses, and then just renting them at an exorbitant price that, that nobody can afford? Or workforce housing, people can't afford?
So we've lived through that nightmare before. We've seen what happened in the last run-up before the Great Recession, and that's the last thing that we want to have happen here. So when people come in and purchase a home, we want it to be a real buyer, not these phantom investors that are going to try to fix and flip and do all the... phantom investors that are going to try to fix and flip and do all the shenanigans that lead to a community imploding on value. And over the next five years, we plan to come before you with many communities and projects. And the last thing we want to do is come out of the gate with the very first part of antelope and not live up to your expectations and what we're trying to provide, which is a really attractive, inspired, affordable home, which is hard to find in Prescott, in the city of Prescott.
Yeah, it is. And the ones that are affordable aren't worth the money.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Blair?
Well, I believe in the project, and the James family's been good to Prescott. But one thing I would say is we do a lot of yakking up here about energy efficiency and different things. So I'm looking at a trade-off, and, you know, some might say you're, we might be holding you hostage or not, but I really would like to see you guys consider two rainwater catchment systems on every house as a trade-off for what you want to do with smaller roads and those kind of things with the PAD. If you're going to stand up and say, hey, we're energy efficient, let's do it all the way and put in the contract with the homes that you're building, put two catchment barrels out there. I mean, make that statement and make the people believe that water's important.
So I'd like to go a little further than that. I love that you brought that up. If we can work with the Citizens Water Advisory Group and create a plan so as people come into this community, we're educating them, we're promoting the cisterns, we're tying it into the downspouts and the gutter system. If we can truly get them for $37 a tank, or even if it's $50 a tank, I mean, I can easily fit that in a house budget. So that doesn't spook us at all.
We don't get anywhere unless we do it. You know, we can talk about it all day long. So one of these things, nuance on a new development, you don't have a chance to make things happen unless you set that out forth when you start. And we're in the preliminary plat, and I don't see anything wrong, and the attorney's probably saying, well, you can't force them to do anything they don't want to do, which I know that's true. But I think it's a quality thing to do in our environment with the water, and it doesn't cost a whole lot when you're starting to talk about another maybe $100, $200 to a house cost. It's a benefit to the community.
So, because I have a couple partners that I'm involved in, are you okay with that? Yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that. And I think we can take it even a further level, that we really educate the public. It's not just we're going to stick a couple cisterns out there, we're going to teach them about the benefits of it, show them how to use it, so it's not just a tank on the side of the house.
And what I do, I've done a lot of things for Dorn Homes, and I can say you're a quality builder, and you do talk a lot about the things you put in a home. And this is the outside things that you can do for a home, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Menor?
David, I just want to say thank you and to all of you. I think it's going to be a great project, great addition, certainly what we need, and it goes along with our general plan, and that was just ratified by our citizens. I would like for you to speak a little bit to the health. You spoke about it will be a healthy product.
Sure.
Tell us just a little bit about it.
So we trademarked the term organic home. And organic home, the way we explain this to the people coming into our sales centers around town, Prescott has the healthiest air in the United States, according to the American Lung Association. And so what better way to take that, which is certified, and bring it into the home? So we have a fresh air intake system that's constantly bringing that great air into the house, and then we filter it so it's clean of any impurities, and we climatize it so it's warm when it needs to be and it's cold when it's not. And then we're constantly pulling the conditioned used air out of the house. So that's the first thing we do, and then we regulate the house so it's not pressurized and the air flows properly through the home. The other thing that we do is make sure the building materials in the house are low VOCE. And VOCE is a volatile organic compound. It's those bad things, like when you smell a new car. It might, you might think it's good, but inside, it's the gases that are coming out of the fabrics and the materials and the rubbers and the plastics. So we use low VOCE or no VOCE products in the home. So the carpets, the cabinets, you know, the glues in the cabinets, the paints, all those are healthy. So you come into a home, we're promoting bringing the fresh Prescott air in, we're keeping the impurities out, and we're really proud about having the only organic home in the United States.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Okay, my question is about open space. And to me, it's not so much whether you have 25% or 22%, it's the quality of the open And I'm, again, having a real hard time reading what they give us in the council packet. It's just in microprint. I can see open spaces that I think are labeled drainage areas, and most of them are accessible from the street, but I see a couple of them that look like they have a drainage easement only. Would those be, would people be allowed to walk along that to get to that area, to, you know, play with their dog or whatever?
Thank you for bringing that up. I felt to point out the colors on the chart. On the plan, up at the top, we see track F. That is a fairly large tract that moves up toward the top of the page. The green area is the area that we've, in our preliminary drainage analysis, have considered that as usable space. That's almost one acre there, just shy of an acre. Not to say that we're going to make a one-acre playground. We're not, that's not what we're proposing, but it's usable to the residents there. We're planning on putting a playground, some playground equipment in there. We would like to do that. We've got two places designated right now. The other one is down toward the bottom of the page in tract, is that G?
D.
That portion of it is usable, and that's a little over half of an acre. Again, and then once we get up north, we've got where we believe we may have up to two more places to incorporate the same type of concept. A place where you can go, there's a little playground set.
Okay, and along that line, will there be an HOA to collect assessments to maintain these areas?
Yes, there is. And the HOA would also be taking care of all of the common areas, yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Mayor, I did want to make a couple of comments, because through this process, there was a question about the city and the concern about incompatible land use planning and inappropriate development in the vicinity of the airport. And I just want to take a moment and just talk a little bit about what the city's done over the last 20 years. Beginning in 1997 with a general plan, there was language supporting the development of an aerial-wide land use plan. And in 1998, city staff undertook those efforts and developed the airport-specific area plan, which is often referred to as ASAP. And this project was probably the most extensive land use planning effort that the city had undertaken for the airport at that time. And it involved airport businesses, the FAA, surrounding property owners, and ultimately it resulted in buy-in from the property owners, Chino Valley, as well as Yavapai County, Prescott Valley, and the Federal Aviation Administration. So the city's focus at that time is the same as it is today, which is to protect the airport from the potential incompatible growth in the future and protect the airport and the investment of the airport. And then in 2002, there was a change in the Arizona revised statutes, and the city adopted an ordinance to establish an airport influence area, and this is literally 38 square miles on all sides of the airport. And I think probably the significance of that action is that it created a notice requirement that the city put in place for potential purchasers of property by including language on final plats about it being an airport influence area and that property is subject to airport or aircraft noise and overflight. And then associated with that, there's a final plat, with that final plat requirement is that properties that have been annexed in the vicinity of the airport since that time have been required to provide an navigation easement to the city, which further protects aircraft operations. And I would say that there's just two other things that I wanted to briefly touch on. In 2011, there was an amendment to the airport-specific area plan, which updated the plan to bring a current to the FAA's guidelines with respect to compatible land use planning in the vicinity of the airports. This is kind of difficult to see, but what I'm showing are the six zones that were aircraft safety zones that were created at the time and included in ASAP, as well as the airport master plan. And you see the primary runway is here, main runway here, crosswind way there, and you see the numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Generally speaking, the lower the number, the greater the amount or type of restrictions and the type of land use that could be located in that area. So with the subject property, Antelope Crossings is located right here in zone 6. Zone 6 is an area where residential development is permitted. And as you can see by the location, it's not located within the main runway or the crosswind runway flight path. And the second thing I wanted to show relates to aircraft noise contours. And the subject property, again, is located right here, and this is actually reflected on the city's zoning map, but there are four designations of these airport noise contours, which actually create five contours. And the 75 LDN that you see in the upper corner, that's a reference to an average noise value, and it most closely approximates or equates to DBA on the noise scale, which most closely approximates human hearing. So by code, no new, no residential can occur in 70 or above greater LDN. And by code, any residential development greater than 65 to 70 in that range LDN, there is a noise attenuation requirement in Article 5 of the Land Development Code. And that actually did come into play for a couple of the homes that were located over on Barhart, over on the north side of McCurdy Drive. And then by code, less than 65 LDN is permitted outright, no noise attenuation requirements. And so that's basically a brief rundown of some of the last 20 years of compatibility planning that the city's done in the vicinity of the airport. Yeah, so again, the subject property is located right here, outside the 65 LDN. And as a point of comparison, if we were to stand here and talk all year long, we're probably doing about 55 LDN. So it's a geometric scale, logarithmic scale.
And that's for somebody standing outside the home?
That's correct. Measurements are outside.
Okay, so we're inside the home, it would be considerably lower, I would assume?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So is there any kind of sound attenuation being built into the homes at all, or just standard construction?
At this point, I don't believe any are planned, that they would do any noise attenuation.
Okay, any questions, comments from the council? Any from the public?
We talked about all these glowing developments, and he's talking about a climatized home. Is everybody going to live there, going to drive a fault so you don't have the exhaust, so you don't have the exhaust pipe? I mean, it's like the city of Long Beach let them tear down the Long Beach Naval Shipyard. Every container ship that comes in there now is equivalent to putting 5,000 cars on the road every hour. Okay? So, I mean, we're talking about all this stuff, but let's go back to the deal here. What are we going to do about the water? What are we going to do about the water? You going to drain the lakes? Every time I look out there, they're pumping water out of the lake. What is a consideration here? How many more can this, how much more can this place stand? Like I said, I'm not a global warming guy, never have been, but until we get some decent weather here, you guys are going to have to stop. Or otherwise, you ever heard that song that used to play on the radio all the time? Day after day, more people come to LA? Well, when I started living in, around the outskirts of LA, I lived in a small town. Now you can't even drive there. But it's, I'm worried about the water. That's the reason I moved here, because we had lakes, we had nice steels. That was before the city of Prescott even bought them. Took all that money for open land, bought the lakes, and now they're draining them. And, you know, I mean, I take my dogs there every day, and every, my dogs like to swim in the lake. Now I've got to keep them out, you know, because the lakes are so polluted. Not because people are dumping stuff in there, it's because they've dried up so much, all the craps come up from the bottom. And you guys don't, you guys never take that into consideration. Chino River's drying up, they haven't had the snowfall up in the mountains, there's nothing to sustain this growth. Go to, when was the last time you went to Las Vegas and drove over Hoover Dam? I mean, the bathtub ring's about 300 feet down now. Pretty soon, you're going to have to stop generating power there. What are we going to do? That's the problem I got. Not with how great these developments are, not how great all this other stuff is, what are we going to do about the water?
If I could address that with you, sir, sir?
Yeah?
Right here.
Okay.
I agree with you on the water, that we need to be concerned about water.
Not concerned, where are we going to get it?
Let me finish, let me finish. We don't pump water out of the lake to drink. We don't. I know exactly where it comes from, and it doesn't come from the lake.
Oh, really? How come the lake, you know, I went to Colorado a couple of years ago, you know, in June, or the last of May, Willow Lake or Watson Lake was almost full, okay? I was there for a week, I mean, they had record rainfall in Colorado. I came back, that lake was down 20 feet, okay? I just go down and stake it. Where's that water going? It's not evaporation, my friend, and don't tell me it is, because it's not. I mean, you guys-
I can go back and forth, but I know for sure for myself, so you can believe what you want to believe.
Where's the water going?
We're not drinking it.
Didn't they pump it out to put in the aquifer?
Only to a certain level.
To a certain level, that's right. It drops at about 20 or 30 feet every time you go there, okay? It's still going somewhere, it's going in the aquifer. Who, what is the aquifer used for? We drink it. Is that correct? I mean, you know, we can blow all the smoke around all the time, but the lakes keep getting emptied out, period. And there's not enough to sustain them.
Okay, I think this water discussion needs to be-
Until you guys get that-
Yeah, I understand.
I would not vote for any of you guys on this council ever again.
Okay, that's your prerogative.
Hi, Barbara Jacobson, Prescott. I haven't been privy to a lot of the discussion for other reasons this summer, but I do know that there is a bit of skimpiness on open space, which is a great concern. And I'm really curious about the title of antelope crossing, because it seems it should be antelope non-crossing. You know, just as I sat there and listened, I couldn't imagine naming something antelope crossing, and I, there isn't even a people crossing in there that I would want to take. And my concern is, twice I heard mention by the gentleman who made the presentation that it would be land, the open space land would be used in the community or, and then for the community. I didn't know if that meant that community, because that's all it looks like, those little teeny spots, like you can walk around in circles on your half acre. And it didn't sound like they were up to 11 acres yet either. So I would really be concerned about what they're setting aside. Is it usable? Does the general public get to use it? Isn't that what we're asking for, that that 25% be usable by the general public? And God forbid, maybe an antelope could get through. Thank you for your, Mr. Blair, for your statement about the rain barrels. And yes, you can buy them at $35. I have three of them. They work really well if you use minimal watering. And I'm wondering about gray water, too. Why not put a gray water system in those houses? Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilcox?
Thanks. Barbara, I just wanted to respond to your comment. I know there's a certain irony in calling this antelope crossing, I understand that. But when I looked at the general plan map, you'll see there's a large green area following the drainage north, and this development is directly east of the airport. And the last thing we want is for antelope to be crossing right into the airport and into the runway, right, Mr. Cox? That would be deadly and dangerous. So I think it's a pretty good assumption that there, that the antelope and the deer are going to be following the drainage to the north, north of the airport.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also respond, I just think it's important that we remember that these houses are going to be priced so that citizens living in Prescott, that work in Prescott, can afford to live in Prescott. This is workforce housing, and it is certainly something that we need. So I think that that's an offset of maybe minimizing some of the open space, Barbara. So I think it's a trade-off for workforce housing.
Come on up. Chuck Queen again, Prescott.
May I use the overhead? First off, I'd like to say, I think the way that, a little background on me. I've been in construction my whole life, worked from ironworker to carpenter to supervision to finishing off as the vice president, assistant vice president with the health system in their construction. So I understand, worked with developers. I think the plan is good. I think what they're talking about, when Dorn was talking about the flexibility to put in the water system, I think is a good thing. I do have some concerns, though, partially about process and partially about the overall. By the way, these should be very close to what you already see up there, because I pulled them off the website itself to try and do my figuring. And when I look at it, there's a slight difference in some positions of the- And when I look at it, there's a slight difference in some positions of the open space, but it doesn't seem to be tremendous per se. One of the things that I did note, and this goes back to, and this one was pulled out of the planning, these are basically from the planning commission on the website. But 14.4% of the area that is going to be considered for workforce housing, which we do need, is currently zoned for multifamily high, about 14.4%. 85.6%, and I'm using the numbers from the planning commission's agenda, is currently zoned as business regional. And I know we need places for these people to work as well as live. And when I went back and looked at the definition of business regional, and by the way, I do know that residential can be, is one of the allowed uses in business regional. But when I read the purpose of business regional, which, from the planning commission, the business regional district is highly, is a highly densely business district. The business regional district provides specific standards for the development of a wide variety of large businesses, offices, service uses. Business regional district uses attract customers from the regional area and have a strong automobile slash mass transit orientation to ensure appropriate access visibility and so forth. And it goes on to what they do to do that. Typical business regional district uses include large-scale office buildings, retail stores selling durable goods and specialty items, restaurants, entertainment, and commercial recreation uses, automobile service facilities, and business, personal and financial services. So what we're saying is that, under the master plan that was passed, this was the purpose for that, for 85% of this area. So all of a sudden, we're changing, and I know that, like I say, I do know that under the call-out of uses, you can put residential in a business regional. But it seems like we're not putting some residential in a business regional. We're destroying the business regional. And by the way, the reason that this area in here is industrial light is because it's in the air, in the, basically the aircraft zone. And if, these are the same detail lines you were showing for noise, that's with the airport today. This council and you, Mayor Horeberg, I believe, are hoping and planning and working toward expanding the airport. When that happens, that's going to impact the general noise issues at the airport. And people who have already bought homes there, which were not told that that was in the plans, which have been advertised, I've read it in the paper enough, that we know it, the council knows it, the developer knows it, that they're planning on increasing the airport, but there's no warning to the person buying the house. If I bought one of those homes, and you increase the airport and increase my noise, I would think I would have a right to be, think I would hoot swamp. Those are the concerns I have. I think the development planning is excellent. I think we need what we're talking about, but those are the issues I have. And as far as water goes, I don't think we have any options. I think that's a long-term water agreement that goes back to James Deepwell Ranch and the annexation, maybe 20 years ago. So I don't think we can argue about whether it's there or not, but I don't think we can argue about legally whether we need to provide it or not. Those are the concerns I have. And if we are going to do that, that's where the procedural concern comes in. Because we are definitely, at least by intent, if not by legal, because you can put housing into a business regional, but by intent for the purpose of the business regional, we're definitely changing the use. And none of what I've seen so far has followed any of the regulations relative to changing use, et cetera. Those are real concerns. And as far as reasonable accommodation, which the city attorney spoke to earlier, I think that the citizens of Prescott also have a right to reasonable accommodation. If we are gonna give up lot size, if we're gonna give up setbacks, if we're gonna give up street side, if we're gonna give up open space, there should be a reasonable accommodation. And I really haven't heard one. I did hear one, by the way, with Dorn, in their discussions about what they might be able to do with, you know, water conservation and things, and that was really music to my ears, because that's an issue we all should be concerned about. But those are the concerns I have. I think it's legally in play, but I do have a concern about taking, when you've got such a large percentage, 85, over 85% of the area is business regional, and the purpose of business regional is to give people jobs, to give the community services. And apparently, as I said, legally, I think we're legally capable of doing what we're saying. I don't think that's the issue. I just don't know if it's the correct decision with the airport and everything else.
City Mayor?
Have you concluded your remarks?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you have a seat? Let me provide, let me provide a little perspective here. And it goes back quite a few years. It, it didn't begin, but it actively began, let me say, with the development of the master plan, which is part of, actually, a land use, conceptual land use plan, which is in the general plan. And that was a process that was done in considerable detail, and the community development director touched upon that. It engages Arizona State Land Department, Federal Aviation Administration, City of Prescott, property owners, plural. And that was in, I guess, 2007, 2008 timeframe. And the objective was to come up with a conceptual land use plan such that the city and Deepwell Ranch as the primary property owner, but not only property owner, could enter into a pre-annexation agreement, which contemplated the annexation and development of lands, including this particular parcel. And that pre-annexation development agreement contemplated a series of annexations and was accompanied by a water settlement agreement, which provided an allocation of what we call alternative water, which is the renewable resource, it's not the groundwater we pump. So if you go back and you look at that pre-annexation agreement, it states that this is basically the initial painting of a picture that is going to be increasingly refined incrementally in the future. But it provides a basis for working, property owner Deepwell Ranch and its professionals, and we've seen and heard from some of the professionals today, and the City of Prescott, working in concert through our general plan, through our airport-specific area plan, through our planning commission, through the city council, through public input, to arrive at development in manageable chunks. And this is basically the first chunk. The stage was set for the development of this land with the designing, actually, agreement first, among Arizona Department of Transportation, City of Prescott, Yavapai County, and basically the property owner, about the realignment of Willow Creek Road, which has now been accomplished. And so that provided the access and provided parallel capacity to State Route 89, north-south capacity. It provides the access here and so forth. My point in revisiting that is that that indicates the ongoing process of refinement here. It created a different major thoroughfare for access and so forth. And so on the, on the land use maps, the gentleman is right. If you look on there, it says there's commercial, there's commercial employment and there's business regional. That was an initial designation subject to refinement. So how do we put that in context? Well, the way we put that in context is that Deepwell Ranch, through its professionals, has engaged a master planner to continue that refinement. And through that master planning process, very similar to what we have learned in the airport area, is it's not in balance. It was a preliminary master plan that indicated potential future land uses, but didn't really lock them in. They were subject to change and refinement through a process and were part of that process today. Let me give you an example. In the airport area, there's too much industrial. If you talk to major property owners, developers, engineers, there's too much industrial in the airport area. We can't support it. There will never be that amount of industry. So what we need to do and are doing is falling back and looking at these land uses and adjusting land uses and refining the master plans. And so we're not losing employment opportunity here by changing a couple of blobs that are BR on the map. We have enough business regional. And in fact, there's a lot behind, which we've learned through presentations, that you just don't go out and build business regional. You better have done some very in-depth planning that looks at what this community is, what the next community is, how much water you have, how much demand you have, what your general plan says about future population, how much you can actually support, so you don't go in and build something that will never be used. And haven't we seen that in many places that we've lived? And so I think the gentleman is on the right track here. It's just that there's a lot more perspective, and this is about refinement. It is a good project. It's a project that was contemplated through a process which has extended back a number of years and will continue to go quite a bit into the future as we look at pieces by, you know, piece by piece, those pieces that make sense as Prescott grows.
Do you want to make one final comment, because we've got to move on?
Well, I just wanted to ask him a question, if you don't mind, about his comments. I believe you said that the changing the use, in some respects, from business regional to obviously high-density housing. Is that what I heard, I think, or not?
What I said was that there was initial master plan, there was initial map of conceptual land uses. It was contemplated from the beginning that those land uses were subject to change and refinement, and we are in the process of doing that. Just like more industrial than will ever be needed was applied to land use in the airport, we probably have more business regional, more commercial employment, and certainly not in the right places.
I respect that 100%. The problem I have is that if you, we, the citizens of Prescott, voted on a zoning and master plan. If you want to modify that, that's, I understand that. This is a good project, I think it has value. But you should follow the procedures for changing your use, especially when you're- and as I said, legally, I know you can do it, that's not a question. But morally, when you look at what it says business regional is, that's not what you're doing there, but that's what you told the public and had them vote on. That's all I'm saying, maybe just follow the procedure for that.
Well, Mayor and council, the, what is being proposed here is consistent and being, and is following the process. And in term, in terms of, again, that mix of ultimate land uses and so forth, that this process that we're engaged in is exactly the process we need to take to get to that result.
Okay. Do you have anything else to say before I get two more comments?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Okay, I'll take two more comments from the public. No, two, we've got to move on.
Leslie Hoy again. Of course, I love Steve, or Councilman Blair's suggestion about the rainwater harvesting. But what I'm concerned about is if that is an arrangement that's made with the antelope crossing, is that going to be written into the development agreement? I don't think it's enough to just have a verbal promise of some kind.
I think it's probably up to our city attorney, and the developer, and I heard the developer say he didn't oppose that, so I would suggest that Tom Geis and the city attorney work with the developer.
Well, we don't have, I mean, we aren't approving a development agreement tonight, but it's on the record, so it's sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and you can be sure that I'll be watching.
We know you will be, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is J.D. Greenberg, and I'm from Prescott. First of all, I just want to applaud the fact that planning is being done in a very deliberate and intelligent way. I also want to compliment Ron James for the fact that he is helping to develop workforce housing. It is something that we all need. I certainly would be a beneficiary of that if I were moving to Prescott right now. I also would like to compliment the development and the fact that at the planning and zoning meeting, it was only 17% that was being utilized for open space. And it, thanks to Mr. James' generosity, it has been increased to 22%. It would have been nice to get that extra acre and a half, so we would have had the full 25% and met the requirements for a PAD. From what I understand, the location of some of the open space has been changed so that there is more connectivity. It's really, really critical, and I go back to our wonderful general plan. When they talk about part of the challenges for including wildlife corridors in development, one of the things that's stressed is that it has to be connecting. The habitats for the wildlife have to be connected so that they can get through developments, so they can get through parks, golf courses, and everything. And Councilwoman Wilcox, you're right, we don't want them on the runway. However, CIMPO, Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, also, when they're looking at putting roads in, considers the impact on wildlife corridors. And we have to do, not only for this development, but for future developments, we have to find out where those corridors are, and we have to keep in mind that we need that to be kept clear, and that's where the significant open space needs to go. It can't be just a little half acre down here for a park and a swing. It has to be open. And at the planning and zoning meeting, they mentioned that they might be putting up block privacy walls along the exterior of this development. And one question I had is if with that increased area, which I think came to about three acres of open space that was contiguous, are they going to block that off with privacy block walls? And if they do that, it defeats a large portion of the purpose for having it contiguous and all together in an area where wildlife. You know, wildlife, we think of the pronghorn, we think of the deer. But there are a lot of other wildlife in this area, and I have to admit, I'm not the biggest fan of the javelina, because they wreak havoc with my yard. But we have to consider more than just the deer, the javelina, the cougars, the badgers. We need to consider it all. And I really hope, especially since this is just the first part of what is going to be a planned development area, please, I beg you, there are people who know the wildlife corridors. Please make it part of the planning process before it even gets to planning and zoning. We have it, it says right in here, "These areas should connect with other open spaces such as parks, golf courses, and trails, and be designed so that they may be used by migrating wildlife as part of an interconnected cluster of corridors." If we want to have wildlife in the land that we all love and moved here for, we have to have those corridors.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, you know, I heard a few things said today that I think a lot of people don't really have a good understanding of the water situation, the land situation, and the way we actually do the process of development and annexation and everything else. So if people have questions and issues, come down and make an appointment with the city here. We're here to answer your questions. We're not afraid of you. We'll tell you exactly what we're doing. So what I want you to do is if you've got some issues about water, come on in. If it takes an hour or two hours, I'll have the right people there to talk to you, and we'll tell you exactly what we're doing. May not satisfy you, but we'll tell you exactly what we're doing, and we're not going to be hiding anything from anybody, I can tell you that. So I think it's time to move on on this. Is there any comments or questions more from the council before we move on? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve preliminary plat PP 16-001 with the additional requirement that rainwater harvesting systems be built with each residence.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Passes 5 to 1, Councilman Lizelle Descenting.
Next item, please.
Mayor, I move to approve the water service agreement number 16-007, city contract number 2017-018.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Passes 5 to 1, Councilman Lizelle Descenting. Item D, adoption of ordinance number 4995, I'm sorry, 4996-1534, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving and authorizing standards based le- standard space lease number DTFAWN-16-L-00121 between the City of Prescott and the United States of America Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. An ordinance number 4997-1535, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving and authorizing land lease number DTFAWN-16-L-00134 between the City of Prescott and the United States of America Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration.
She got open space in the parks. She got trails in the, I want a heater. Come on, no one wants an association to take place.
Okay, let's go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. John Cox with the airport. This facility was--
Did you bring, did you bring a heater with you?
Yes.
He forgot his winter coat. Let's go.
You need my jacket, sir.
No, that's above and beyond the cause. Go ahead, John.
Yes, sir. The city constructed this facility, which was referred to as the FAA Flight Service Station Facility back in 1983, as a strategic economic strategy to bring high-paying federal jobs to the community. At the time, the FAA started leasing that facility, it's 10,000 square foot, in 1983 with 55 full-time federal jobs. In 2006, the FAA began to contract out to a private firm to handle all the flight service functions nationwide. So the number of the personnel that utilized this 10,000-square-foot facility dramatically reduced. It's now utilized by what we call the FAA Technical Operations or FAA Airways Facilities Maintenance Team. So there's about a dozen people that operate out of there, but they were looking into as far as the use of that facility, as far as minimizing their existence here at the airport. So this existing lease actually expired in 2014. Over the past two years, Don Hirsch, the real estate specialist with Public Works and myself, negotiated with the FAA not only to justify their existence to remain in that facility, but to also negotiate the terms of the lease. So over the past two years, the negotiation continued with some upgrades to the facility and necessary upgrades, like an HVAC upgrade. The last HVAC work that was performed in there was in the early 90s, so it's, it's close to 25 years old. Recently, the city council did approve a design phase with a local architectural firm in August to expend up to $200,000 worth of HVAC upgrades in that facility. There could be potentially for up to $100,000 more, potentially in fiscal year 18, for some additional upgrades to that facility. However, the good side is the rate that was negotiated for the land lease itself is about $11,300 per year. The standard rate for the space, which is the 10,000-square-foot facility, is about $88,000 per year, that equates to almost $100,000 per year in lease to the federal government for up to a 20-year term, which calculates out to almost $2 million of revenue into the airport fund over that period of time. So again, the city council has approved up to a $200,000 expense or an investment in this facility for an up to $2 million benefit for the 20-year period. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Questions, comments from the council? Do I have any from the public? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4996-1534.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4997-1535.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Next item.
Item E, approval of city contract number 2017-095 with Amyf Foster Wheeler for the Granite Creek Dam Valves Replacement Project, Phase One feasibility study in an amount not to exceed $178,770 water fund.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Oros, Program Development Manager in Public Works. The item before you at this point is the first phase of a feasibility study of repairing the Granite Creek Dam and the valves that are in there to work with the, to control the flow of water through the lake. The valves, a couple of years ago, had been identified as having deficiencies, either because of sediment or other issues. We went through a period of negotiation to do a full design feasibility study, got to a point where the cost of that study, because there were so many variables, was getting more than the cost of the construction of the project. We took a step back and rethought it and stepped back to a feasibility phase and a phased approach to completing the project, and that's what is before you today. The first phase is determining what the Department of Water Resources will require in terms of replacing the valves and controlling the, the water in Watson Lake. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Steve--
Councilman Blair.
Oh, question, thank you, Mayor. My question is, is that valve able to be totally shut off, or is it still leak?
The valve is leaking.
And will continue to leak until it's fixed?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
A mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2017-095.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Item F, award of city contract number 2017-099 to Empire Power Systems for the purchase of a used water treatment booster facility, standby generator, and removal and trade-in of the five natural gas-fueled engines in a total net amount of $199,000 water fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, especially Mayor Pro-Tam Lamerson. Good afternoon.
Well, I like the road jobs you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Most of today's discussion that you have had has been about water. It is a good thing to have enough water quality, and we have one of the best water qualities, and also good to have water quantity. However, in order to bring water to our customers, existing and new, you need to be able to get the water there. And this has been one of my major concerns since the day I started here, about two and a half years ago. Chino Valley System is the heart of our water. That's where water comes from. Chino out of power, no water. This really has been bothering all of us, and today's agenda item is really very important and sensitive, because with your approval, we want to bring an emergency backup, and power failures do happen, have happened many times, sometimes half hour, one hour, two hours. But in other places, I've been through some, all kinds of reasons, storm flooding, could be a day or two. We cannot afford to be without water for a long period of time. They've had five emergency power generators in there, the Wachash engines, for the past many, many years. They have all failed and out of commission. We have only one that if we need it, we can get it started, which will provide a fraction of needed water. Today's agenda item, and I want to thank our utility manager and his staff, Mr. Craig Dossett, who really, really worked hard on this to get us where we are, and Craig is going to give you all the details. So this is really, really important. My goal has been to have everything in place by the end of this year, and with your approval today, hopefully, we will get there. With your permission, Mayor, I'd like to ask Craig to join us.
And they're so obvious that you can state them in less than a minute, right, Craig?
I'm getting hungry, too. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Craig Dossett, Utilities Manager. The item I'm here to present this afternoon is to request approval of a city contract to Empire Power Systems for the purchase of a used standby generator for the water booster facility in Chino Valley in an amount not to exceed $199,000. The contract also includes the removal and trade-in of five decommissioned Wachash natural gas engines and accessories. The five natural gas engines were the primary power supply for the booster pumps from 1998 through 2002 to convey the water from the booster facility to the city. Over that timeframe, natural gas prices increased significantly and internal engine parts failed, so the booster pump motors were converted back to electric power. Since the conversion back to electric motors, staff has used parts salvaged from some of the natural gas engines in order to maintain one of them to supply emergency water supply at a rate of 2 million gallons per day in the event of power outages. The 1,500-kilowatt generator and transfer switch package recommended is sized to run 1,000-horse booster pump and two 500-horsepower booster pumps to provide up to 9.5 million gallons per day for emergency supply of water during power failure situations. Five bids were received in response to the notice inviting bids. The recommended generator package offered by Empire Power Systems meets the specifications, scope requirements, and was evaluated based on total package condition value. Condition of the unit through an inspection, load bank tests, oil sampling, engine tests, and low hours on the unit of 722 hours have verified the quality of the unit. Purchase of the generator package includes one-year parts warranty, and the fiscal year '17 funding is available in the water fund for this equipment, and the purchase does not have to pay transition privilege tax as water-producing capital equipment under a state statute clause. With that, I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments from the council?
Let me just comment that, Craig, I think the maximum production of our Chino Valley facility is 12, about 12 and a half million gallons a day.
12.9.
12.9 millions a day, million a day. I've provided some figures for you from time to time in the weekly briefings and so forth. We've been hitting maybe 10 to 11 in recent years because of conservation and so forth. So the importance, as Craig has indicated here, is that if we don't do this, we, you know, we have that peak demand of as much as 11 million gallons these days and, and have only been able to, on an emergency basis, provide two. This generator will up that to 9.5, which means that we'll be able to supply 3/4 of our water in the event of a major power outage, so this is extremely important.
And yet, peak time that you're talking about is basically during the summer, right?
Yes, sir.
So during the winter, we're down around seven, eight, nine gallons?
No, actually, more like, more like 4 million gallons. It's, it's very low, and I can remember, and Craig probably can remember, too, one time near the Fourth of July when we lost all power, and it's not a comfortable place to be.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
A mayor, I move to award city contract number 2017-099 to Empire Power Systems for bid number one, a 1,500-kilowatt used generator in the net amount of $199,000.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Councilman Lozelle?
Oh.
Passes six to zero.
I pulled a billy.
Next item.
Item G, award of city contract number 2017-078 to Revolution Industrial LLC for the South Tank Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $826,146 water fund.
Thank you. Steve Oros again, continuing the theme of water. One of the, another part of our system is maintaining the tanks we have throughout the city as part of our tank rehabilitation program. This is the first project of recent years to begin rehabilitation projects. This one is a concrete buried tank that's in the Acker Park area, and all of the work will be done inside the tank. There'll be very little exterior disruptions to either trail users or the vegetation in the area, as all the work will be done inside the tank to maintain the concrete material inside and to improve the water quality there. The project was publicly bid. We received three bids. One of the bids, which happened to be the low apparent bidder, didn't have the right licenses to do this type of work in Arizona. They were from out of state, and they didn't have the right license, so we had to go to the second bid, which was a little bit higher, but have very good references and were satisfied that they'll do a great job for us on this project. The project is, has fund, funding in this year's budget to conduct the work, and will be done during the low water demand season coming up here in the next few months. If there's any other questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Councilman Blair?
I know it's getting late, but I'm just curious. I don't know that you know the question, but when they empty that tank out, they're going to coat it with some kind of substance, I would imagine.
Correct.
Rubber base to protect the seepage in that concrete.
I'm not sure if it's rubber based, but it is a coating that will minimize the leakage in the tank.
What kind of sediment do they have in that tank? You know, it's been sitting there for quite some time since it was built. What kind of sediment ends up in the bottom of those tanks, out of curiosity?
Through the videos that we've have and as we monitor the tanks, there is some sediment in the bottom, and that'll be cleaned out as part of the project, and if there's any small cracks or other imperfections in the bottom, those will be treated as well with the crack fills that we have designed for the project.
No diamond rings to settle Mel Amerson's jewelry or anything like that?
I don't know about that one, but we'll, we'll put up a lost and found.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Steve, how many gallons of water in, are in that tank? I assume it'll have to be drained, and where does that water go?
Okay.
Where will you drain it?
I will defer to Craig on that because he's the guru on the actual operation of the tank.
Okay.
We will be able to use a majority of the water down in the system, will draw the system down, and then we'll turn it off. The remaining volume that's in it will be drained slowly into the Acker Park area then, and we'll go down the wash.
Okay. Well, last time that, the tank was drained from the top of the hill, it left a huge scar, and it's still there today.
Okay. We definitely will be aware of that.
So let's take care.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Bill Dan.
Thank you. Getting back to Blair's question, because I didn't hear the answer.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm curious, because I'm, we, we've been told what sediment does in the bottom of Willow Lake or Watson Lake, and some of what's in there doesn't sound real good. What's in the sediment in the storage tank? I'd like to know what--
Sure.
--what's in there, because you know, if, if it's in the bottom of the storage tank, is, is all we do is store water there? We don't ever use that water to--
No.
--drink, or we never use the water to, water to grass or anything?
No, the, the tank is used all the time, and it fills and drains on a regular basis, and Craig can address a little bit more of what is in the, the bottom of the tank.
Yeah, I'd like to know what's in there.
The, the tank is 5 million gallons, so it's, it's a huge bottom bucket of water up there on top of the hill. Our water is moving continuously from the time we pump it out of the wells all the way through the system, then it gets here into town, into that 5 million gallon bucket. They're superfine silt particles, I mean, superfine in the water. When we get it into that tank, then it actually will settle out, so that's where the settlement comes from that Steve mentioned, in there. And again, by the video that we've done in the tank, there's very little in it, but there will be some in the bottom of it.
I appreciate you telling us that what's in the water is silt and not something that's carcinogenic that we're all consuming every day.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, move to award contract, city contract number 2017-078.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you.
I think this is the final item.
Item H, one, award of city contract number 2017-091 to Acela Incorporated for use of Acela Civic platform software to manage all land use permitting and business license activities in the annual amount of $107,460. Two, award of city contract number 2017-092 to the Sidwell Company for Acela Land Management Implementation Services in the amount of $44,695. And three, award of city contract number 2017-093 to the Sidwell-- And three, award of city contract number 2017-093 to the Sidwell Company for Asella Local License Management Implementation Services in the amount of $20,000, general water, wastewater, and street funds.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Gwen Rowich, Public Works Analyst. The item before you is to request approval of three contracts for the purchase and implementation of the new Asella software program. This program, currently, the city has a program called CRW Tracket, which we use for all permitting and capital projects here within the city. We've simply outgrown the functionality of the program that we have now, and in addition to that, the company that supports CRW was purchased by a larger company, who was purchased by a larger company, who was purchased by a larger company, all within the last 12 months. So we are questioning the support level that we're going to receive going forward. So it's for these reasons that we reached out to some other companies that provide this type of service. We believe we have found a compatible software program for the city in, in the Asella software company. In addition to the permitting and inspection activities, we'll also support the business license program. Some of the additional functionality of this system over the system we have now is that our users will be able to interface online on a computer. They'll be able to apply for permits, pay for permits, see their inspection results, request their inspection results. There is a lot more functionality and interaction between the process and the customer, and that includes both our internal customers and our external customers. So we're very glad to be moving to this program. I've been working with Nate Keegan, the IT Director here in the city. He's supportive of this program as well. The actual conversion to Asella from Tracket requires the movement of a large amount of data, and it's for this reason that we have two additional contracts with the Sidwell Company for their assistance in the implementation of the program to get it going. We anticipate moving to the business license module first, and that'll happen around the end of this calendar year, and then we will move permitting program around the first quarter of 2017. Answer any questions that you might have.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Under this, and it's primarily for permitting that I'm questioning, I can do this online now as a contractor, right?
That is correct.
Can I add comments to it?
Can you add comments to a permit?
No, to like calling in for an inspection?
You would be able to request an inspection, and then log in after the inspection and see the result of the inspection. You would have written comments.
So there's no interaction there, then? Like, like I said, I can't be there until, can you be there before 10:00? Or is that still the old-fashioned way where I call early in the morning and?
Well, that's somewhat up to Randy, the building official. But there is, there is some functionality in the program where emails can be sent to send you a result of an inspection and that kind of thing, but as for what time we come for an inspection, that's largely in part due to resource management within the department.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
I move to award city contract numbers 2017-091, 2017-092, and 2017-093.
Second.
Got a motion, second vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, I always like to wrap up with a little comment from some of our founding fathers, and this comes from James Madison. And we just had the Constitution Day proclamation, "The inanimate rights of the people are most likely to be preserved if the principles of government are set forth in a written constitution. The structure of the American system is set forth in the Constitution of the United States, and the only weaknesses which have appeared are those which were allowed to creep in despite the Constitution." Thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned.